Good evening to you all and welcome to this session of the Garner Town Council. This is a work session this evening, so it's somewhat different. And some of our preliminary introductory items we don't cover. But I'm going to do something tonight that's maybe a little different and unusual. For those of you who'd be willing to join me, I'm going to ask us to have perhaps a moment of silence for a country that's a long way from here. The people of Ukraine are, as you well know from all the news reports, are fighting in many areas in a valet sort of way. People that I admire, their people apparently love freedom. So I think it'd be fitting, if you care to, join me in a moment of silence as we remember and think about those folks and what they're undergoing right now.
I appreciate that. So we'll begin our meeting this evening with the call of the role. And Ms. Ashley, I'll ask you to do that if you will.
Mayor Marshburn?
I'm present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance. Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Thank you very much. And as far as I know, I think Councilmember Vance will be along. I'm not sure exactly when, but he should be here as far as I know. Okay, council, you have before you the agenda and the next item is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to do that?
Stand up.
Okay. And then second, I believe. Okay. Motion made, probably second at all. In favor, please vote aye.
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 Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you so much. All right, we have several items under discussion of reports. And so first item, I'm sure, garners a lot of attention on this council and other people who are here this evening. So LMG Master Development Agreement and Program Update, Mr. Andrew Holton. Or I guess, yes, I recognize Ms. Mari Howe, who will perhaps introduce our presentation. Is that correct?
Yes, I would be pleased to do that.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. We are going to give you a brief overview of an update for the downtown opportunity site. Andrew Holton from LMG is going to be here to share some additions that have been made to the program and also give you a high-level overview of the Master Development Agreement that'll be coming to you on March 22nd. You may notice in your packet that in the pending agenda, that was listed as March 7th. That was sort of a tentative date. We're anticipating March 22nd now. And that will be when we bring you more details about that contractual relationship. So that's all from me, and I will go ahead and hand the mic over to Andrew.
Welcome, Mr. Holton. It's good to have you with us this evening. We look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. It's good to be with you this evening. I will... There we go. I was not with you in the last presentation with LMG because I was not yet working on this project. But I've been working with LMG for about two years in various capacities, have been working a lot in the Charlotte metro area. They've moved me to the Garner project because I live in Wake County, and they decided that would just be a crying shame if the person who lived closest to the project wasn't involved there. So I've taken on the day-to-day responsibilities related to this project and look forward to working with you through this Master Development Agreement discussion, as well as then on through the project going forward. We're excited to be here. It's been a lot of planning work. We've had great work with your staff, trying to sort of come up with a framework that we can sort of both sort of agree to as this public-private partnership and move towards, I think, the plans that you had invited in your request for proposals. Our goal today is to give you a little bit of sort of an update as to how the project has changed, I think, for the better, and some updates on sort of how that program has evolved. And then, as Mari said, to sort of give you a sense of what to expect at that 22nd meeting with a Master Development Agreement sort of framework. Please interrupt me along the way if you have specific questions, and I'll definitely try to pause at the end to take all the questions that you have. So the projected program right now has evolved, it's grown, I think is probably the sort of easiest way to put it. The footprint and the height have not changed significantly, but we've sort of changed the structure of the units. We've added sort of, I think it was about 15 new residential units. So we're looking at a total project that would sort of contain 70 residential units. About 27 of those would be studio apartments. 37 would be one bedrooms and six would be two bedrooms. And so you'll see that this is a smaller unit orientation, which we think is in demand right now, both in Garner and in Wake County. We've run the market analysis a couple of different ways, and we're very comfortable with that sort of balance. You know, it's going to focus on single residents or partnerships, not a lot of sort of joint tenancy, if you will. But we think it's going to bring people downtown and sort of give you that sort of connectivity between the residential population and the retail establishments. All told, we would anticipate there being roughly 5,500 square feet of retail space, and I'll show you a site plan in just a second. So looking forward to activating the Main Street sort of frontage, sort of in between Main Street and the railroad. We think that there's going to be an ideal spot for a restaurant, sort of an anchor restaurant opportunity. And Peter Floats, who I believe met with you last time, told me to emphasize that he's still working hard on the ice cream shop. So we're looking at other sort of retail opportunities there. We think that that 5,500 square feet will likely be split between two or three sort of retail bays, one on the corner likely being best suited and we're outfitting it for the grease traps and the sort of ventilation that a restaurant kitchen would need. So as you sort of orient yourself here, Main Street is at the top of this picture. So you'll see, I'll use the cursor here, this would be the ground level on Main Street, and then this would be the ground level on Purvis, no, not Purvis, sorry, sort of on the backside, sort of facing the recreational space. Along Purvis, we'd have, I guess, six, seven, sorry, seven residential units. So sort of if you think of a brownstone feel in a lot of sort of neighborhoods, they would be kind of that, hey, we're on the street, sort of activated sort of residential units. And that would wrap sort of a second tier of parking, and then at the ground level, sort of the base, would be sort of this level of parking. So two levels of parking together, that's 137 parking spaces. We've been talking to staff about sort of electric vehicles and sort of how to program for that, and so we anticipate there would be some sort of EV spaces. But for the most part, it would be spaces that would be available both for residents and for town use. This in pink is the commercial space. So this is sort of what we're carving out here as the ideally-suited restaurant space and what we're currently outfitting for that. You'd have sort of the lobby entrance to the unit sort of facing Main and then have two to, one to two sort of additional sort of retail base here sort of cut up. This would be a mailroom and sort of interior lobby space. And then we go to the residential floors. Most of the yellow, or all of the yellow are sort of existing planned residential units, and then the pink spaces are what you would have for amenity space. So you'd have a sort of a fitness room sort of space there on the third level or the second level as you sort of come up from Main Street, and then at the top third level, you'd have the club room. The dark orange would be the corridor space sort of circulating between the units. And so, you know, one of the things we wanted to give you an update, I'm sure you're reading all the same reports and newspaper articles that we're reading about sort of the construction market and all that is happening, so I wanted to give you a sense of what we're seeing and what we're, how we're sort of thinking about things going into it. For the last year, we've seen roughly a 2% monthly cost increase for construction. We've been, I think, largely fortunate to see that offset in related rent increases. That's not been a one-for-one increase, but as you've read and seen, rents are continuing to rise, and that has helped offset some of those cost increases. The supply chain issues that you read about are real right now. Trusses are in particular, in particularly in demand, and we're seeing nine-month lead times for sort of trusses. We've seen lots of appliance and certain sort of metal products that are also having six- to nine-month lead time. At this point, we've not yet had a project that has had to slow down its ultimate schedule because of that, but we've had to pace things accordingly. And so we've had a couple of projects where we reorganized sort of the structure and the construction timeframe in order to sort of meet the supply chain issues. Right now, with the conflict that the mayor sort of observed earlier in Ukraine and Russia, we're seeing the beginnings of issues related to energy. And so we have heard that across the board that we should expect sort of energy-related supply chain issues. The other big issue right now is the lumber markets and a lot of the shipping and transfer of lumber, both from Canada and then throughout the United States. And so those are all things that we're watching that are going to affect the project, no doubt. We're hoping, though, that as we continue to work through the pre-development cycle, there may become some stabilization there. You've also no doubt heard that the Federal Reserve is likely going to be raising interest rates over the next year, and so we're seeing the sort of beginnings of the cost of capital rising. We're hoping that that's going to be offset by investor expectations that will adjust accordingly. So investors realizing that the market that was last year and even two, three years ago isn't necessarily what we're going to see for multifamily residential. All of that said, the best news we can tell you is there still does seem to be strong demand for multifamily residential. I mean, you see all of the housing supply numbers and reports, I'm sure, around Wake County that I've seen, and I think that the need for housing is as acute as it's ever been. So I'm breaking the timeline down into two slides. The first is the pre-development timeline. And right now, we think from the moment we execute a master development agreement, we'll need six months to sort of have final construction drawings, pricing, and being ready to go. So if the master development agreement, as we're currently discussing, is reasonable to you and you're able to approve it on the 22nd of March, then we think we can begin that process and shoot for a sort of late September, early October sort of construction sort of timeframe. We then go through your typical planning and Board of Adjustments processes. We anticipate there may be a variance or two requested as part of this process. Work with the county around erosion control planning, ultimately then shooting to have sort of the plat approval, kind of that final site plan sort of ready for approval sometime towards the middle of the summer. Our design drawings, that's kind of the interim level of drawings that we pull together. We would hope to be ready in 30 to 45 days from the point in time we would agree on a master development agreement. We'd move to have those permit drawings sort of in line with when we have that final site planning done, to then have the final construction drawings sometime in September. So we think that this is an aggressive, but still very reasonable sort of path, and we're proud to have a good team, some of whom are on the phone, I believe, this evening in case you have technical questions. But Kim Lee Horn, who I think has advised you on matters relative to civil engineering previously, has been actively involved. And then Built Form Architecture is our design team doing the construction drawings themselves. So if we're able then, as of late September, October, to sort of begin construction in earnest, then we see sort of a two-month sort of site work period. First, we would build the podium and sort of the cement structure upon which the residential would sit. We anticipate that would take us through sort of the early part of the summer of 2023 and then take another nine months to sort of build out the mixed-use components, the retail and the residential, and shoot for a certificate of occupancy sometime in March of '24. So the next step for us, sort of working together in this partnership, would be finalizing a master development agreement. You set forth your request for proposals. We responded. We have a memo of understanding that sort of laid out some base parameters. And what we're doing now is working with staff to come into this agreement that would have some real legal bearing. It would sort of create commitments that both sides would be honoring moving forward. For us, it gives us a major sort of development. It gives us site control, and it allows us to then sort of go to the capital markets and indicate that clearly and to start raise the equity part of the deal, demonstrating that we've got a deal in place with the town. It also sort of signifies to the lenders and those who are going to be underwriting it on the debt side that we have an agreement. We see a lot of interest right now in public-private partnerships, and so we anticipate there will be a lot of lenders who are interested in examining the deal. But the first thing they're going to ask is, well, what does the deal, what the town look like and how is that framed? And so being able to show the master development agreement is an important part of that underwriting What we're looking to sort of frame out is an agreement that has both a timeline, it has sort of the minimum sort of required private investment that we would commit to on the front end, and then it would have a sort of a not-to-exceed level on the public investment side for the parking structure. We're expecting final, I said not final, but at this stage, what will be the last element of pricing that we would get from our general contractor Kaufman-Lynn, hopefully going to get it tonight, if not first thing tomorrow, and we'll present that to staff then. And that will be the final few sort of blanks we have available in the master development agreement. We've been working with Terry and Mari and John to sort of come up with a basic framework. So I think we have a fairly mature draft at this point, been populating some exhibits and things that will go to support that. And so the hope is that well in advance of your meeting on the 22nd, we will have a draft to circulate and ultimately be prepared for you to discuss at that time. So with that, I'll open up for any questions that you might have. Happy to talk, big picture, and to the extent that I'm able, technical.
So thank you very much, Mr. Holton. And I'm pleased to know that, yeah, you're right here in Wake County, so...
Sir.
We can find you if you're not too far away.
Absolutely.
Okay. You know, really, I'm encouraged by what I see and hear, but I know council members probably have questions and comments they want to make, so I'll defer to them at this point. But a good presentation and exciting plans. Phil, do you have anything you want to start with?
Just like you, Mr. Mayor, I think it's going to be a fantastic project down. The timing is perfect and plus having the apartments what have you, which is something that's needed, and it's going to be a shot in the arm for all the businesses downtown, the coffee shops and restaurants. And I'm glad to see you've got this thing so structured. You guys have got it all put together.
Yes, sir.
And can't wait to see the finished products. Congratulations.
Me, too. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Singleton, anything?
Yes, Mr. Holton, the question, the variances that you might need from the Board of Adjustments, do you know specifically what variances you might have to seek for the project to move forward?
My anticipation is that we will likely need to discuss sort of the parking count and just sort of generally come up with sort of a scheme that the town is comfortable managing relative to parking. Right now, we're programming 137 spaces. We anticipate sort of having a evening sort of system where the residents would be able to use those, some of those spaces. Right now, we like to program roughly one per bedroom, so we're looking at right around 78 spaces that in, you know, the evening hours would be tied to it during the day. We sort of model a shared parking structure so that public residents, folks who are coming to the rec center, whomever can sort of use it as necessary. And so that's part of the process that we'll need to sort of discuss and make sure that you're comfortable with what we're framing out. I know that was one. There may be some other site plan issues related to setback or something like that. The Kim Lee Horn team is sort of managing that on our behalf, and I can get you a specific answer tomorrow, but I don't know off the top of my head what else they were expecting.
Okay, all right. Thank you, appreciate it.
Ms. Behringer.
Yes, it's a beautiful plan. I'm excited about it. I live in the downtown area, so being able to see that, especially since years and years ago, didn't look quite like that. And I'm especially happy to see that LMG's attention to housing affordability and for our workforce housing, that's something we're going to need to pay more and more attention to, and you fellows are leading the way.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Okay, Ms. Dellinger.
Thanks for the presentation. It's coming along nicely. I kind of want to follow up with Ms. Behringer's comment, Councilwoman Behringer, yes, on the affordability, because I know we, I think it's sort of implicitly assumed that we'd have this sort of workforce housing situation. And so I'm really curious to see the price points, the numbers, and to see if the vision is for all of them to fall in that category, or have you looked at models where some are market rate because they're on the top floor, have different views? We had a retreat a couple of weeks ago, and housing affordability is kind of on our forefront, investing in it as well. So I'm curious as to where that stands right now, because you've laid out a lot of volatile market conditions, and those are all real. And so just kind of, what's sort of conceptually where we sit with price points and stuff?
Those are all very fair and reasonable questions. I'll do my best to take them right now and then happy to continue the conversation as we sort of prepare the agreement and offer some context on what we're doing in other markets. So our strategy for workforce housing, and I'm sure Peter said this when he met with you before, but our strategy with workforce housing is really tied to a smaller unit size that is amenitized. So you see, you know, your living space is not what, you know, it would be, it would have been 10, 15 years ago, but that allows for the cost per square foot to be more moderate and then to have amenities. And we consider downtown Garner to be an amenity, I want to really emphasize that. I mean, that is one of the things we say is, look, you have a coffee shop across the street and a rec center right next door. So, you know, in terms of the types of amenities folks are going to look for in apartment living, Garner's got it going on downtown, and we hope that the restaurant and some of the other retail establishments will yield that as well. But then we have some spaces built into the building as well. So when you're talking about the naturally occurring affordable housing, that's really tied primarily to unit size. And to your point, there's some variance within the project, you know, studios, there will probably be at least two different sort of models. One bedroom's probably two different models, and they'll be priced differently. And, you know, at this point, our expectation, based on where Wake County's sort of workforce housing analysis is, is that there will be some of those that are naturally occurring. We are more than happy to talk to you about other ways to sort of push affordability into this project. You know, we're working in another market where that was similarly a priority, workforce housing particularly, was similarly a priority of the governing body. And so they wanted to specifically look into ways to subsidize that as part of the project. And so we were able to work with them, and so we had a percentage of the units that were tied to the area median income. And they sort of provided sort of the gap between what the naturally occurring affordable rate was and what that deeper subsidy would have been to maintain that affordability. So happy to talk about that, if that's something that the council's interested in exploring. But I think independent of that, these units, because of their size and just the way that we're sort of orienting them in the market, we think that they will be available to folks in the workforce category. And the final thing I'll say is the, you know, we try to get creative with different governing bodies and identifying other sources of revenue that can go to. And I know the county has been very active around affordability. I spoke with Commissioner Calabria not too long ago, and he was talking about the needing to, us needing to sort of think about the little a affordability, not necessarily the formal affordable housing, but just again, that workforce, everyday sort of family individuals who are in Wake County sort of trying to find regular workforce housing, how do we sort of attract and create more product for them? And so we're happy to have that conversation. And in another market, we're really looking at some of the federal programs that are coming in through the various sort of COVID-related infrastructure funding. And, you know, the, what we've learned is the metrics for affordability in those programs are different than the HUD metrics under other programs, but we're trying to sort of figure out how to overlap those so that we can come up with new ways to sort of subsidize and create more affordability. So my guess would be that it's the most expedient way to sort of continue moving the project forward would be for us to sort of come up with an initial master development agreement that sort of is neutral on that specifically. But if that is something that the council wishes to prioritize, we can always sort of amend the master develop agreement and talk about other levers that we can add to the mix, and are happy to do that all the way through the pre-development cycle.
Yeah, I think it's a good conversation to have, and we want to keep moving forward because I think you mentioned the cost of capital. I'm sure that's one that kind of snuck up on everybody, and...
Yes, sir.
It's probably not going to nosedive the way it's, you know, driven up. So we'll, I'm sure the council will be open to those types of conversations to see how we can contribute even more meaningfully beyond the land to meeting some of our other objectives. So thank you.
Okay, council, you've heard from Mr. Holton. I see a number of folks who apparently are with us virtually. Any other questions for Mr. Holton? And I was going to perhaps recognize any others who affiliated with your organization. I see Mr. Trezenberg. I'm inclined to ask Mr. Trezenberg, who is our planning director, to weigh in if he cares to or with general comments. But before I do, anything else for Andrew? Okay, you're not leaving yet, I guess, so we may have some follow-on.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask Andrew just to clarify one thing, just for you all as well as anyone else viewing it, the rendering that we've got here at the end of the slides is actually the initial concept when the building was L-shaped. And I just want to make sure that people know that with the addition of the additional units, that if you saw this view in the current scheme, you would actually see apartments that are wrapping. that are wrapping. So that's what you're seeing right now, and then they're actually going to wrap around there. So if you were seeing this view from the, the lawn of the rec center, which is about where that rendering is done from, right now you see an opening that goes towards the front of the building. And I just wanted to point out that with the new design, you'd actually have apartments that face the recreation center lawn and park area.
That is correct, John. I'm sorry about the, the confusion there.
No, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure people knew that.
We had not updated, we had updated the site plan or the, the floor plan, but had not updated the, the rendering. But we will do that as we continue to move forward.
Could I refer to it as a reversed C or backward C or new shape as opposed to the L?
Like it.
Whatever.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Thank you, John. Rodney, anybody down there have questions?
No, we're just looking forward to having something that we haven't done in Garner before. Looking forward to partnership and just making this successful. So a few things to work out, but I think we're going to get there.
Okay. All right. Jeff, I don't want to put you on the spot unnecessarily, but I always like to give you an opportunity to speak if you care to at this time.
He is but was not planned to be a part of this conversation, so he may not be available at the moment.
Okay. Looks like he's muted anyway, if, if I'm reading the symbol right there. So, okay. Mari, was anybody else that you were aware of that wanted to, to speak this evening?
They were just on in case there were any technical.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, council lets you have anything else. I'll excuse Mr. Holton here and thank him again for, for being here. Did you have to drive in from Charlotte, I guess? Oh, no, you're already in Wake County. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry.
Not a commuter at all.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to being with you again soon.
Yeah, yeah, we will, we will look forward to that as well, for sure. Okay, if there's nothing else on that, then I'm going to go to item two, and I will recognize our Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Maria Blanco. Good to see you this evening.
Good evening. Our presentations have disappeared. John, help?
Just pull down to the bottom. I think that menu is floating, Maria.
That's okay.
Go back one more at least.
Had you pulled it up previously?
No.
Is that going to take anybody offline?
Thank you for your patience, council, and I apologize for not having this. All right. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about some proposed changes that we want to, to get your feedback and guidance on as it relates to our fee schedule. And these are changes that would apply to the fiscal year 23 budget, so we have quite a few months left to get your additional guidance on this. Changes to, to our fee schedule are certainly aligned with the strategic plans of the town as it relates to our fiscal responsibility, which are goals of the town council, the efficient and timely delivery of services, again, sort of ensuring our fee structure is balanced, and also it's aligned with our comprehensive master plan as it relates to, again, our revenue and cost recovery efforts. Now, we did a staff review. We reviewed all our fee schedules based on the 2022 budget, and we primarily focused on the activity fee and the facility rental fees. I don't know if you've ever sort of noticed this, but of the nine pages in the town fee schedule, four and a half pages are park and recreation fees. We counted about 178 different lines of fees, so, so we do want to, again, sort of make sure that we are accurate and that we try to streamline this a little bit. We also reviewed fee schedules of five peer municipalities. We want to make sure that we are aware of the market rates. And we identified four main areas that we needed to do some work on. We're fairly inconsistent in how we apply the non-resident surcharge. We also have some opportunities to simplify our streamline and reduce some duplications. We have some fees that have not been utilized in quite a while, could be combined or eliminated, and certainly want to have a consideration to the increased cost of our programs. And we presented this to the Park Recreation and Cultural Advisory Board last week, I'm going to say, at their most recent meeting. Now, the next few slides just give you an idea, and I know you have a paper copy, I hope, or you have a delivered email copy, so you can see these numbers more clearly. But one of the things that we did in looking at our peer towns was look at specifically comparable programs, and we found that generally we have fairly comparable rates for resident fees. We tend to have the, the lower differential for non-resident activities, particularly when it comes to youth activities. And then our peer cities are, how can I say this in a way, are as inconsistent in applying a non-residential, non-resident differential as we are, ranging from 19% to 100%. And again, this just gives you an idea in general of the various activities that we have. Another finding in our market review as it relates to facility rentals, again, fairly comparable rates for residents in the same situation where the differential surcharge for non-residents varies tremendously. Internally, we reviewed our own information, and we found, again, fairly similar findings. This gives you an idea of the differential percentage that we apply in our facility rentals. And as you can see, we're pretty consistent when it comes to shelter rentals. We tend to either not charge or have no consistency when it comes to interior spaces. And again, in making sure that our residents, who are already subsidizing our operations with a tax base, are getting a fair fee. We also found some of the, as I mentioned earlier, there's some facilities that have not been used in recent years or that are only used when are combined with another. And this is just a couple of the examples that we found. Proposed approach, we want to make some cost adjustments that consistently apply a non-residential fee, and we're proposing 35% for programs and activities and 50% for facility rentals. And we came with those percentages, looking at what we're charging now when we have a differential, that seems to be our sort of most consistent approach. We also wanted to make, or we proposed to make some modest changes to fees to reflect increased costs, with one exception. We actually want to lower the cost recovery fee for teen programs. Right now, it's 85%, and we would love to see it go to 60% to be consistent with the cost recovery of children under 12. And the reason for that is we really want to sort of expand the services that we provide to teenagers. They're a very interesting audience for us to serve, and we tend to have programs that are a little bit priced out of the range. As I mentioned earlier, we have fees that are not in use or are duplicative, and we'd love to streamline by making that tighter. And then some operational updates. One of the things that we have noticed is that most of our facility rentals for social events tend to be for two hours, when three hours is the most average type of use to allow for load in and load out. And that's what we would propose to do. And again, we'll continue to review the fees in our market to make sure that we're competitive. These are some of the examples of how we would approach the changes based on, on the principles that I noted earlier. I mean, I'll go with the first example, so you can see the sort of duplication. Right now, we have for the same rate, the adult open basketball league and the adult softball league. And we want to do it to combine them all in an adult open leagues for all sports that we can be consistent with the way we charge. And same thing, again, the same chart that I showed earlier with the facility differentials, this is what it would be if we bring it up to 50% non-resident differential. Our next steps, with your support and guidance, we would complete a review of all of our fees. We would include the changes in the 2022-23 budget fee schedule for council approval, and then any changes or increases would be implemented in fiscal year 2023. And you may notice in my slide, there's one extra line that you did not see in the information distributed earlier. Since I was presenting to you tonight, we are trying to get guidance from the North Carolina Park and Recreation Trust Fund on an application for Yergin Park that may require your resolution of support. If that is the case, based on their cycle of deadlines, we will bring that to you at the next council meeting on March the 7th as an agenda item. I just wanted to sort of get your, your feedback on whether you think that's a good pursue for us or we should just delay it until a future year. And with that, thank you for the time tonight, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. I would just make a quick observation, and I realize this is a simple response, but I'm thinking we've had some success with previous Part F grants in some other areas in our Parks and Recreation Department. So I, I kind of have a favorable idea of them, but that doesn't mean that there aren't other challenges in, in using those grants that we may or may not want to do that. So, having said that, I'm going to recognize Ms. Behringer as the first person, if she has questions or comments on your presentation.
I don't have any questions. I just appreciate the work and effort that's gone into this to update it, level that we need to be.
Okay, Mr. Dallinger.
Yeah, me too, and especially the, you know, emphasis on youth and making sure they have access, and particularly keeping the differential low and those cost recovery fees low. You know, a lot of ETJ, non-municipal folks that, you know, pay a little bit more, and so keeping that close is going to be really, it's good for the broader community. So, thank you for that.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes, so thank you for the information, Maria. A little history on this, since I've been on here a long time. When I first started, the, the only differential was, if it was non-resident, it was $5 more. If it was $10, it was 15. If it was 20, it was 25. If it was 30, it was 35. And so the council at that time, or the town board at that time, wanted to make a change. We wanted to double everything. However, our attorney advised us we couldn't because the federal grant money was used to do Garner Rec Park and South Garner Park, and you could not double it. And so that's when we encouraged them to go up 50% roughly. We had a little, little, one of our recreational partners didn't want to do that, but they were told they had to do that. It wouldn't get any town support, so they did. But anyway, it's morphed over time, so I appreciate you looking to fine tune the consistency so that shelter rentals, this rental, that rental, whatever it may be, are on a more consistent, from a percentage standpoint, residential and non-residential. So thanks for the information and look forward to whatever you have to bring to us regarding the Part F grant. I would say, hopefully wouldn't slow any, any progress down in regards to the start and construction of that park, but after we went through the rec center and then slowed down that one, I don't know if anything could be any slower than that. So, anyway, thanks for the information.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Phil, anything?
Great presentation, by the way. And I know the shoulders are booked just about solid, and I think the three-hour minimum is a great idea because having used them and you see, time you load in, then you load back out, then you got your event, and somebody else is ready to get in there, it's just two hours, it just, it ain't going to happen. So switching that to, that was, that was a good move. And I think your fee schedules look good, and it's good to get these things updated. So it's going to be a busy year.
And Mr. Vance, any?
First of all, please excuse my lateness due to work in traffic. Thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to say a few things. And, Ms. Maria, all I can say is thank you for your, for the hard work that you put in here, and everything has been said, and I will not interject, interject at this moment. Thank you very much.
I should note that it's a team effort. Our team at the Parks and Recreation and Cultural Resources Department, they're all incredible people, and they all certainly participated in this review effort.
Well, just before you leave, I wanted to note, and I guess I could do it a little later, but it was nice to see the G-PAC open this past Saturday for our showcase of talent, I guess. And so I'm supposing moving forward, we'll hope to see some more musical events or and/or other entertainment types of things there. I believe our town, town players are getting ready for production sometime within the next few months, is that right?
It's either April. And then in May, we have quite a few of the dance studios in town will do recitals and performances. So yes, and then we sort of take a little bit of a break in the summertime because we do have summer theater camp with town players also as a partner, so.
That's a different subject, but at any rate, it's one I look forward to. But yeah, thank you very much for the work that's gone into this, and I think the council probably is, is very appreciative of what's been done, and hopefully we'll confirm that when we get ready to vote on this.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one thing? I know the board recently, we looked at salary levels specifically for Parks and Rec. Has that helped as far as recruitment in? How are we looking on recruitment of personnel as we're coming right to the edge of springtime here, and it's going to be a busy season?
We just started recruitment for our summer camps, so I don't know that I can answer specifically whether we're sort of getting good numbers or not, but we're combining the new rates with a more sort of intent recruitment effort partnering with NC State and the Recreation Department, talking to the other, making sure that we are on the, on the job boards for college students, which are a good sort of source of us for, for summer help, well as connecting with the coaches at the, or escort keepers, which we're now able to, to recruit under.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Maria, did you want to mention anything about the Diamond Creek show?
Yes, thank you. So March 7th, no, March 7th, no.
12.
12, thank you. That's your council date. March 12. Diamond Creek, it's a local bluegrass band. Will be performing at G-PAC at 8:00. So it's our, it's our second to last sort of it's showtime performance of the year. The last one, it's a spoken word event. So we're looking forward to seeing them and enjoying the music. It's a lovely room. It sounds really, really nice, the theater, so looking forward to that.
Good. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, council, you see the next item there. I'm going to recognize our town attorney, Ms. Terry Jones, training on the Federal Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, its impact on zoning decisions in the town of Garner. And just as you're getting ready to present, Ms. Jones, I'd like to recognize folks that are here, I believe Planning Commission, and maybe, let me see, who else?
Board of Adjustment.
Yeah, Board of Adjustment. If you're part of any one of those, I see, yeah, both of you there, okay? Anybody else? Yes, excuse me. Okay. Thank you.
And we have a number of those members online as well.
Yes, it does appear so. So, okay. Well, Ms. Jones, I'll recognize you at this point to explain the presentation and possibly even why we're doing it.
Thank you. I would like to welcome the members of the Garner Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment who are participating in this in person and virtual. who are participating in this in person and virtually tonight, and thank you, Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to provide this training on this important federal law to you. I'm happy to take questions throughout the presentation or at the end, whichever way council would prefer. I would suggest for the members online, we open that up to them at the end, perhaps.
Makes sense.
So ARLUPA is the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. As I mentioned, it is a federal law that was signed into law September 22 of 2000. So it's been around for almost 22 years now. It protects individuals and religious assemblies and institutions from discriminatory and unduly burdensome land use regulations. It also protects the religious freedom of persons who are confined to prisons and other institutions. We're not going to be talking about the prisons and institutionalized persons portion of this, but just the land use protections that are included within the act. So the freedom of religion is a right guaranteed in both the First Amendment of the United States Constitution, and it's also guaranteed in the North Carolina Constitution as part of the Declaration of Rights, specifically under religious liberty. The ARLUPA statute contains five major protections against substantial burdens on religious activities, unequal treatment for religious assemblies and institutions, religious or denominational discrimination, total exclusion of religious assemblies, and unreasonable limitations on religious assemblies. And I'll go into each of these in a little more detail further on in the presentation. There's several different types of religious uses protected. So we normally would think of the places of worship, your churches, your mosques, synagogues. But this law also extends to religious schools, camps, retreat centers, cemeteries, and then social services that many religious groups are now providing, such as group homes, homeless shelters, and soup kitchens. And it extends to the individual exercise of religious expression, including home prayer gatherings and Bible study groups that may occur in your traditional single-family or multifamily dwellings. The substantial burden, whenever land use regulations create a substantial burden on religious exercise, that is prohibited unless the government can show that it has a compelling interest and the regulation is the least restrictive way, otherwise known as strict scrutiny. And this is the highest level of scrutiny on any type of government regulation that there can be, similar to your other First Amendment rights. So unequal treatment is also, you'll hear it as equal access or equal terms. All religious uses must be treated at least as well as non-religious assembly uses. And this is one instance where you can treat religious uses better or more preferential than you do other non-religious assembly uses. So for instance, you can't say that there are no religious establishments in a particular zoning district if you still allow private clubs, schools, nightclubs, theaters, or other gathering places. So it's really about that right to assemble and congregate, that you cannot discriminate one group on the, you cannot discriminate against religious establishments. On the contrary, you can say, no private clubs, no nightclubs, no theaters in a certain zoning district, but you cannot prohibit the religious establishment if you're allowing these other types of uses in the same zoning district. For discrimination, you cannot treat applicants differently based on religion. So think of the major and, you know, even some of the unaffiliated or independent religious groups, or based on their denomination. So within the Christian faith, Catholic, Protestant, the various different types of Jewish sects, as well as the Muslim sects. So sometimes that's overlooked, that you talk about denominations, but it also extends beyond just religion to denomination within a religion. Under the unreasonable exclusion, this is the third major category of prohibitions, you cannot completely or unreasonably limit religious assemblies within the town in any particular zoning district. So, you know, obviously, you couldn't say there will be no religious establishments within the town of Garner or within the ETJ, but you also cannot unreasonably limit them within particular zoning districts. So a facial violation would be if the UDO prohibited religious establishments in particular zoning districts. For instance, saying an activity center or the central business district, there cannot be a religious establishment. That would be a facial violation of the federal law. What happens more often is what's called an as-applied challenge. So if the UDO would allow religious establishments in all of the zoning districts, but there's actually limited availability of property, then that could be a violation as well. I don't think that there's any problem of that in Garner. We haven't heard that religious groups have come here and said, you know, I can't find any land to build. But it's, that happens more often, these types of challenges, where there would be, say, setbacks, that a religious establishment would have bigger setbacks that would basically make smaller parcels unavailable for them. Talk about, a lot about religious exercise, but the exercise of religion, it doesn't depend on whether it's a central tenant of that religious belief. It's basically any exercise of religion. So any, this gets to be very broad and hard to define, and it also includes the use, building, and conversion of real property for the purpose of religious exercise. So it's not only the aspect of the gathering and the expression of religion, but it's the place in which it can occur. So ARLUPA is a federal statute. It applies to the state departments and agencies. It applies to municipalities such as the town, but it also extends down to the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment, and that's why they were invited to this training as well. So decisions they make could constitute a violation of ARLUPA in some circumstances. And we'll talk about some case studies a little bit further down in the presentation. So basically, the statute applies to all types of land use decisions, variances, rezonings, special use permits, occupancy permits, site plans, and even historic landmarks. It does not apply to the FIRE code, does not apply to the American with Disabilities Act, building accessibility requirements, some water and sewer connections, and some stormwater remediation. Now, what I want to remind you of is, this is a list that has resulted from litigation. So people have challenged, or groups have challenged, requirements where a particular religious establishment would need to comply with something. These are not exemptions listed in the law. The law is very broad, so some people will commonly say, oh, well, they have to comply with the building code. And it's true, they have to apply for building permits, but similar to the zoning restrictions, if the building permit or the building code would say a religious use needs to have certain materials or that kind of thing, and a similar assembly use would not, then that could result in a violation of ARLUPA. So it's not a blanket exemption. Again, they must apply for permits and follow the same processes as the other land users, but if there's any conflict between the federal statute and our UDO, the federal statute would control. Federal law trumps the local ordinance, and I hate to use the word trumps anymore, but there's not a good synonym. The substantial burden, as I stated, this is one of the main claims that towns and other municipalities are impacted with. And as I talked to council before about this, last year, the Kingdom Life Church, they wanted to open and operate in the former school that's at 2425 East Garner Road. They bought the property in January of 2020, and the pandemic hit, so they weren't, they were holding outdoor services at that point. When they decided that they wanted to renovate the school and the gymnasium to be able to use, they came and had some pre-development meetings and then found out that there would be significant infrastructure requirements made because primarily, this would be a change of use. The use of the school had expired and discontinued some time ago. It was later used by the Wake County Sheriff's Department, but that also had expired. It had been bought by another religious group, but they never used the property, and then it was sold to the Kingdom Life Church. So what their attorney argued was these infrastructure improvements, such as widening of East Garner Road, curb and gutter, storm drains, and sidewalks, would be a substantial burden on their exercise. And that's because their consultants at the time estimated that these improvements would cost about $500,000, and they had only invested in purchasing the property $285,000. So their attorney was arguing, you know, you can't ask them to spend more than they bought the property for, but that's not where the analysis would end, and particularly, the tax value of the property is only about $190,000. But that is one of the factors that goes into how you analyze whether there's a substantial burden on the exercise of religion. So again, there's no clear standards at all in the federal law. It's, they're basically being fleshed out by court cases. So it depends on the impact on their religious exercise. Again, it depends on the size and resources and religious needs of the congregation. So that's where, you know, how much money do they have to invest in the property comes into play. Space constraints, this happens a lot with whether they, whether a particular church or other religious building can expand on the property, the reasonable availability of alternative properties within the jurisdiction, and the absence of good faith by the zoning authority. So this is a very fact-intensive analysis that has to be done, and as you'll see, these cases can take years and years to be resolved. The substantial burden test is applied whenever the town makes an individualized assessment of the proposed uses for a particular property. So this usually means that they've applied for a permit, a rezoning, some type of decision that has to be made by the town, which involves reviewing facts and making discretionary determinations of whether to grant or reject that application or use. In the case of the Kingdom Life Church, they had only had pre-development meetings. They had not actually applied for any permits at the time, and that made the analysis a little bit difficult because it's hard to say, you're going to be required to meet this standard, when we didn't have a site plan to look at to determine how much parking they had, what were the conditions of the buildings, those kinds of issues. And there can be regulation of religious establishments, but it must involve a substantial threat to public safety, peace, or order, and it must be achieved by the least restrictive means. So this is just one example. Oftentimes, traffic is an issue because the services create a demand on traffic at a specific time of the day, generally a specific time of the week. So rather than denying or requiring road improvements, it's suggested that you add a safety officer or some other traffic control to be applied during the busy times and not to be applied 24/7 throughout the week. Private lawsuits can be filed in state or federal court within four years of the alleged violation. So a permit might be denied tomorrow, and we might not get a claim for four years that it was based on some type of religious discrimination. Most of the enforcement occurs by the Federal Department of Justice, so they do investigations, like what they did of the town of Garner last summer. They can also file lawsuits for declaratory or injunctive relief. The Department of Justice cannot seek damages from any of the government entities. However, there are private lawsuits where they can ask for injunctive relief, damages, and attorney's fees. And unlike some of the other federal statutes, for instance, in employment discrimination, there is no requirement to wait for what's known as a write-to-sue letter from the Department of Justice. So they don't have to go to the Department of Justice first with the complaint. They can just sue a municipality for a violation. We'll go over all of this, but as you can see, most of the Department of Justice enforcement over the last 20, or well, the first 20 years that it was in effect, was more often in the institutionalized persons part of it. So although their investigations were much higher for that than for land use, many more of their lawsuits have been on land use violations. And the 53 amicus briefs, 29 for land use, that's where they're providing a friend-of-the-court brief in a private lawsuit, generally on behalf of the religious establishment. But then they have filed in 65 other private lawsuits where they have filed as an intervener as a party to compel some type of action, which means the Department of Justice in those instances believed that a violation had occurred. Now, it's my time to shock you into why this is important and why we're here today. So Fortress Bible Church wanted to locate in the town of Greenberg, New York. So as you can see, the case was decided in 2014, and I'll skip to the end first. 600, 600, $6.5 million settlement. The town's insurance policy only covered $1 million. The taxpayers were coming up with the other 5.5 over a short period of time. So that was a very serious, large damage claim that occurred after a 26-day trial, but this went on for over 15 years. So just to give you a little bit of the history, the church submitted an application in 1998 to construct a church and a religious school on property that it owned. The first thing the town officials did, and this is maybe why the damages claim is so high, the first thing is the town officials requested that the church donate a fire truck or make a payment to the town because they didn't like the church's tax-exempt status. So that's where it started. Then the town, you know, the church did not comply. The town board required the church to undergo a State Environmental Quality Review Act, so a State Environmental Act, study, even though the planning commissioner for the town had found that no impact would be caused by the proposal. And then the planning commissioner. 20, I mean, I'm sorry, in 2001, the town required yearly financial contributions to the fire department in exchange for continuing the review under the State Environmental Act. The new planning director was instructed to kill the project, and this kill was found in the court transcripts. And board members stated that they were opposed to the proposal because it was yet another church. In 2002, the town just stopped the review process completely because it wanted the church to reimburse the town for fees that the town had incurred during the review process. And then finally, in 2004, the town denied the application due to zoning concerns. And then finally, in 2004, the town denied the application due to zoning concerns. So in 2012, obviously, the Fortress Bible Church had finally decided to sue the town. The federal court determined that the town violated ARUPA in these actions. So what lessons do we learn from this? Now, this is probably one of the most egregious aspects, but what we've learned is watch what you say, it can be used in litigation. Jokes don't come across, even though maybe in the room, everyone knows you're joking, they don't come across when either the Department of Justice is reading it or a judge is reading it in a transcript. You also have to watch what the public says. You cannot condone discriminatory comments through silence. So if members of the public come up and say, "We don't like this church, we don't like," as they say, "those people who go to that church," you can't just sit there and condone it. You have to affirmatively say that the town does not discriminate based on religion and that those types of comments are not germane to the record. If a project is being denied, should always allow for reapplication of a modified proposal. So if there are significant traffic concerns or something, is there a way to change the proposal, the size of the building, the amount of the services, something like that, to get to a point where the project could be approved? And always apply the same process and procedures to religious and nonreligious applications. Here's another example. In Wakulla County, Florida, recently in 2020, there was a preliminary injunction against zoning enforcement action. So one of the churches operated a sex offender transition home, so a halfway house, basically. It was initially approved as a family care home, and then the neighbors complained. So as a result of the neighborhood complaints, the county issued a notice of violation contending that it was a boarding house, which was a prohibited use in that particular zoning district, and it was in a residential zoning district. The code enforcement board, where it was appealed to, upheld the notice of violation. And then the county amended its zoning code to prohibit not only boarding houses, but to also prohibit family care homes and shelter homes as principal uses in that particular residential zoning district. So because of this amendment, it turned out that there was no location in the county where this type of use could be operated at all. And therefore, the court found that there's a substantial burden because the county did not have a compelling interest standard to say why all family care homes, shelter care homes, boarding houses, that could be used for sex offender transitions should be restricted and prohibited within the county. Promise, there's not a whole lot of these, but here's one that's an equal terms case from Potomac County, Maryland. So an existing church sought to expand at a new location with a 1,000-seat sanctuary, religious classrooms, offices, a fellowship hall, and a gymnasium. So a very large, what we used to probably call a mega-church at one point. In 2014, so again, this case was decided in 2020, but in 2014, a special exception was administratively granted because a church in this conservation zoning district needed to have a special exception. Then there was a local nonprofit planning group. So it was a group of citizens organized around planning issues. They appealed the granting of that special exception. And then the Board of Appeals reversed, and so basically denied the special exception because gymnasiums were not typically approved in the conservation zoning district, and the proposed parking lot would not comply with the zoning ordinance's impermeable surface requirements. So one on a use and one on a stormwater regulation. In 2020, the federal court upheld the constitutionality of ARUPA and also found that the zoning ordinance violated the equal terms provision because it allowed public schools by right, but required religious uses to obtain a special exception permit. So it wasn't as if there weren't large assembly-type uses such as schools allowed in this district. It was really they were saying that religious establishments had to go through a different process, and that was a violation. Fortunately, in ARUPA, there's what's called a safe harbor. So if a complaint goes in that there's been a violation, that the ordinance or some application of the ordinance would create a substantial burden on religious exercise, you as the town government could change the policy. You could keep that policy, for instance, saying that certain uses couldn't exceed a certain amount of impervious surface, but exempt the religious exercise out of that. And you can provide exemptions, or you can take any other means that eliminates the substantial burden. So basically, what the federal government, Congress has built in is a way to take action before you get that $6.5 million settlement. We are located in the Fourth Circuit, I believe. So this is a case of a coffee shop and a church in Laurel, Maryland. I'll give you a little bit of the history of this. So in March of 2015, the Redemption Community Church bought property and intended to operate a nonprofit coffee shop Monday through Saturday and a church on Sundays. So they bought it in March. In March and April of that same year, the city amended the zoning code to prohibit nonprofits in the community village zoning district and to require a special exception for churches on less than one acre. In November of that year, 2015, the church reorganized as a for-profit entity so that it could operate the coffee shop. The coffee shop opened on April 3, 2017, with valid permits and a use and occupancy certificate. And then it began holding worship services on April 9, 2017, so the first Sunday after it opened, and then on Sundays when the coffee shop was closed. On July 27 of 2017, the city issued a cease and desist order. The church continued holding services on Sundays, and the city issued a second cease and desist order on January 26 of 2018. And then the church filed a lawsuit at that point. It really looks like that changing of the zoning amendment was really pointed at stopping this particular church from operating in that zoning district. There was, again, a lot of comments in that case that this was really motivated by discriminatory animus, and it was found that it violated equal terms because community theaters, libraries, museums, art and music schools, all of those were allowed without a special exception. But in going forward, the court also looked at substantial burden. Again, like I said earlier, this is the most fact-intensive analysis that the courts do in these types of cases. And the court did look at how much the church had invested in the property before it was denied. As a result of this case, the city did amend the zoning code and it removed the special exception requirement for religious establishments and removed the one-acre requirement for Generally, none of these lawsuits can be filed until the applicant has obtained a final decision. And that's where we were with the Kingdom Life Church last summer, is that they hadn't actually applied for a permit, they hadn't actually been told what would be required for them to operate inside the buildings on that property. And so our argument was that it was not ripe, that they needed to go through this process because, again, without a site plan to analyze, it was hard to know what exactly would be required for them. And in general, they must exhaust their administrative remedies by either appealing the denial or seeking a variance where a variance might be appropriate. However, under the federal law, sometimes they don't have to do that. Sometimes they don't have to wait if they can show that going through the application and appeal process would be futile, or there would be excessive delay, uncertainty, or expense. More often than not, I would imagine that they would file their lawsuit and in parallel be going through these other processes to see which one happened first because it would be a big gamble for them to file a lawsuit and then find out that they missed their opportunity to file for an application or appeal a permit denial. Just to bring it back, with respect to the Kingdom Life Church, the Department of Justice made no determination as to whether or not the town had violated ARUPA. However, it did mention in the letter that the UDO infrastructure requirements associated with the change of use were characterized as extraordinarily expensive improvements. And that's just to hit home the fact that an analysis of what the resources are of the religious group are important to consider. We like to look at the UDO as it applies equally to everyone, but it can have some unintended consequences on some particular property owners associated with it. But I'll give you this last slide. So if you want further information, the Department of Justice has a Place to Worship Initiative, and that is available on their website. And then, on the flip side, the law firm of Robinson &amp; Cole, they specialize in defending municipalities, counties, other local governments in claims and complaints made on ARUPA. And so they have a fairly robust website that can, has a lot of different materials and a lot of different case histories on how you defend against this, how do you make your ordinance the strongest it can be to prevent any of these claims in the future? So those are two resources available if anyone wants additional information. I thank you for participating in this training, and I'm happy to entertain any questions you would have at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Jones, for your thorough presentation. I think we've all at least have a greater appreciation for these kinds of cases, and this is the first one I'm aware of that maybe the town's been involved in, could have been in the past. What I'm going to do is I'm going to ask council members to weigh in if they have questions or comments, and then I'm going to recognize members of the planning commission and/or Board of Adjustment if they have any questions or comments as well. We'll start with those who are present here now, and then we'll, there are several people online, I believe, but Phil, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It sounds like the bottom line of all this, you cannot change the rules after the game has already started. So that's what I've taken out of all this, it jumped out, is that you can't single nobody out and change the rules just to go after them were not approved.
Yes and no. You can change the rules after you get a complaint in the favor of the religious establishment. That's that safe harbor, but yes, you clearly don't want to make decisions that are focused on one particular user. It's probably never a good idea in any realm to do that, but particularly with religious groups, they do have a federal statute that protects them from those kinds of legislative actions and also the administrative actions on permits that may impact their ability to use property.
That was a good presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll go to Mr. Vance on this end.
Yes. For the case that we had, did this apply? Did this apply, did this law apply to the case we had with the Kingdom Life?
Kingdom Life Church, yes. I mean, the ARUPA statute applies to the town regardless, and it applies to all religious establishments. And so what happened was their attorney first went to, well, first came to me saying, "We think the town's violating ARUPA because they want us to do these road improvements that we don't want to do because they're going to be very expensive and because we don't think there's a need." He then, when, you know, we went through and said, "Well, they haven't applied for anything yet. We don't know where you're getting the $500,000 estimate, but these are the standards that apply in the ETJ to any use, any change of use that would come in of this magnitude," meaning not a single-family home on that property. It was zoned for a single-family, basically. I believe it was zoned R40. So then the attorney decided to file a complaint with the Department of Justice, and that's when the Department of Justice started an investigation. And we complied with the request for information from the Department of Justice, and then ultimately, last fall, they concluded their investigation and found that no violation had occurred. Well, actually, they reserved and said they were closing their investigation without a determination, and that was at the time that a zoning compliance permit had been issued for the church to operate in the gymnasium building. So they had sufficient parking and infrastructure for the gymnasium building, not necessarily for the size of the former school building. And then, my concern with Mr. Beasley is that they can pick up their permits at any time for the building. They have to do some work on the building. These are buildings that have not been used in a number of years, and there has to be some work, which they knew about, some upgrades to the HVAC system. They also have an issue with the septic system. They don't have an operating septic system at this time, so before they could occupy the building that needs to be, they need to install a septic system, basically. When it was a school, my understanding is it had some kind of package plant that discharged into the stream, and that would never be allowed again. That was a very old system. So they would have to meet your regular well, septic, or water and sewer standards.
Thank you. Mr. Dillinger, anything?
Yeah, I'm just glad we have you now as a resource. I guess my question is, do you have a particular recommendation of when we should be checking projects for compliance since it doesn't apply just to churches, but also maybe a for-profit religious entity or a group home? Is there any time we should really be saying, asking the question, is this religious-based or affiliated?
That's a good question. I'm going to be doing a separate training for the development services staff to go into more detail about that, but my recommendation would be you apply the UDO like you would normally, and basically, people self-identify because they want to say this use is allowed in the district. But we typically allow religious establishments in all of the residential and commercial zoning districts, so that's probably not an issue. As we're doing the UDO rewrite, part of my analysis is to make sure that we don't have one of these facial violations where we're treating religious establishments differently than your clubs, your recreation centers, your schools, those kinds of other assembly or meeting place-type uses. So that'll be done, but in most cases, they're going to self-identify that they're a religious establishment, and then it, in many of our districts, they are a principal use, so they are permitted as of right. There are some places where there are additional use standards, for instance, about whether the entrance needs to be on a collector's street or the main street, and then some buffering of other residential uses in the area. So there are some other restrictions that we also need to look at to see whether that would have a burden on it. I think- I think fortunately, staff has applied these standards without any kind of discriminatory animus. They're not asking, like, what religion are you, what denomination are you, what, you know, they're not asking those kinds of questions. They're really looking at what is the size and intensity of the use and, and the particular property involved. So I don't, I don't think we have any of those kinds of issues. And then it becomes for the, you know, once there is an application in, and then it determines whether it be infrastructure or setbacks or something, then it's really for that group to say, you're burdening my religious exercise in this way, and to look at, is there some kind of less restrictive, you know, do we need to treat this differently than we would, say, a school or something, or a use that, you know, say a movie theater that's open every day of the week, you know, it may have the same level of traffic and intensity of use might be different than a religious establishment.
Ms. Behringer, anything?
I don't have any questions. Excellent presentation. We appreciate the, the clarification and gives us some more things to consider and make sure we have all our facts together.
And Ms. Singleton.
Yes. Well, I would say I'd like you for the information. I second, agree with what everyone has said. I can remember back many years ago, I think before anyone in this room, this is before Rodney King, this was in the 90s, we had a group home case in Gibson Pond subdivision off Creech Road, the old town hall. We had meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting, full town hall of people. And Attorney Anderson went extensively, did something similar to what you're doing and teaching us, teaching the community about what can be and cannot be allowed. You cannot discriminate against group homes and there's certain types of homes. I know that's been updated over the years also because standards have changed. In reading this, I thought, this was adopted in September of 2000, I'm sorry. And I remember when there were issues with, what people thought issues, not just in Garner, but in the area of storefront churches, because they went where they were downtowns, happening in Garner where downtowns were not having a, a lot of vacant buildings, they put churches there, and you, you can't do that anymore. Obviously, just take the land, or at least whether it was a business district or the way it was owned, you're not allowed to do that anymore. But that was something that was taking place, not only in Garner, but in numerous towns around the area. And I can remember when that had to be changed. I, I remember hearing some of this in, in the past, but I thank you for updating us on this specifically. I think it was interesting that DOJ, DOJ said, I'm sorry, that when you have a change of use plans, that the requirements are, they deem them to be maybe excessive or expensive. We've heard that before, not from religious groups, but from people that come into change of use. But that's, many times, we're just trying to upgrade or bring the standards up to the current UDO and/or general statutes is what's trying to be done. So thank you for the information.
Just a follow-up to Councilman Dellinger's. One of the allegations they made is there were three other churches in the ETJ in that area that did not do road improvements. So one of the initial allegations was you're singling us out to do this, why are you doing that? But I commend the Planning and the Inspections Department staff. They went back and researched, and, and in each of those situations, they started the development and either their expansion or construction of their church under the county system before they were brought into the ETJ. And as you know, or you may not know, but NC DOT standards for road improvements in the unincorporated parts of the county are much less than, well, their standards are less than what we require in the ETJ and in the municipal limits because traffic is higher around the municipal limits. But, so what appeared to be that here, a particular church was being singled out for these road improvements was not really the fact, it was a, a timing issue. You know, they bought the property and wanted to develop the property after it was already in the ETJ.
Okay, and I'm going to get to others just now. Well, one quick observation I would make, as I recall, based on the inquiry that I had early on, I think there was confusion about whether or not, at least by some of the lay people, why the town of Garner was being involved, I think when they purchased the church, they didn't understand that Garner had jurisdiction, and of course, it wasn't in our town limit, it was in our ETJ. And I think, so one question was, you know, why is Garner requiring us to do this? They don't have any authority here, do they? So just.
Yes, that, and the fact that Wake County had sold the property to another church who did not develop the property, there was an assumption that that church had already established a religious use on the property, but they had never occupied the buildings or had services that we're aware of at that property.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, I'll recognize any members in the audience first, and then we can go to those online. Hopefully, we can cover any questions you want, but anybody from the Board of Adjustment or the Planning Commission, if you have a question you'd like to ask Ms. Jones, I would just ask you to come to the podium so we can hear you. Anybody? Okay?
Presentation, it brought a lot of clarity. I have a question that may be just, it may be a question or just maybe adding to your information. By the way, my name is Anita Powell. I'm the vice chair for the Board of Adjustments. When you mentioned this our Lupa, you mentioned burden, it can, whether it's a burden on the facility or whoever wants to participate. When we're dealing with the Board of Adjustments, we have, one of the questions that we ask has to do with, is it a hardship? With this our Lupa, is there a difference between whether it's a burden or a hardship, or is it one in the same? And if we figure that if a person comes to us and says, well, what you're doing is creating a burden, and you said this is fact-finding, at that time, do we pause what we're doing to give whosoever participating time to see if this actually comes up under our Lupa?
That's a very good question. I'm not sure in my research, I've seen people comparing that. Obviously, our Lupa does apply to the variance decision, and I would think that there's a lot of overlap between the unnecessary hardship standard and substantial burden. But perhaps to frame this in a way that's a little different than just looking at the property aspects and the, the site dimensions, is that, you know, there were, there are some jurisdictions where they will put a size limitation on the building. And so with that size limitation, perhaps the entire congregation can't meet all at the same time. And they'll say, well, you can have multiple services on Sunday or Saturday, and, and therefore, keep the building smaller, keep the parking smaller, keep the impervious, keep the road improvements and all of that. But there have been different denominations and organizations have said, no, a central tenet of our religious expression is that we all can meet together. And so that restriction of saying you, you can only have a limited size became a substantial burden on their religious exercise. So it, you know, fortunately, I don't think the Board of Adjustment has had to face this issue, but if they do have to face it, that's something that will have to, to be looked at. My guess is if an applicant is bringing the our Lupa claim, they're going to be coming with an attorney who's going to flesh out those kinds of standards. But if not, you know, council that represents the Board of Adjustment, he's aware of the statute as well and, and the application of it.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else here in person want to ask a question? Clint? Okay, I'll go to those who may be online listening in. Are there persons there who want to ask Ms. Jones a question? Okay, hearing none. Council, anything else? Well, thank you, Ms. Jones. We've met that requirement, and we all hopefully going away more informed than when we came. So thank you very much. All right, the next item on our agenda is, I believe, the manager's report. Am I at the right place? Let me double-check.
Yes, you are.
Okay, I recognize our town manager, Mr. Dickerson.
All right, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, in the back of your agenda packet, you have the pending agenda for the upcoming month. I will note, as was stated earlier during the presentation, that the LMG Group Master Development Agreement, that's scheduled for March the 22nd instead of March the 7th, as it shows in here. Just make note of that. And then also, wanted to just give you a brief update on some of the speeding concerns that you've posed over the last few months about Timber Drive, staff, particularly engineering staff. Town engineer Chris Johnson continues to be in contact with DOT and has made some headway there, although it's going to take some time. Things are moving at a slower pace because of some other staffing issues they have, but they have, I think, in principle, agreed to a change of speed limit for where, where it turns into 35, going back to Vandora Springs Road. And then also some signage changes, so they are looking at some of those design changes there and placement of the signs that we had talked about changing out. So we hope, you know, over the next few weeks or so, we can get a firm commitment on that and then, you know, take some time to start moving toward getting that changed. But it is kind of moving in that direction. So, is there anything else to add?
We just wanted to confirm with council that everybody is okay with, with extending that 35 zone to end at Vandora Springs, heading back towards 70. If you are in agreement with that, DOT has prepared the ordinances, and they'll be in your agenda packet next week under consent. They're a little confusing if you look at them. One is repealing an ordinance that takes it from seven, the 45 zone, that the ordinance is basically the creation of 45 mile-per-hour zones because it's 35 and less posted otherwise. So you'll see two maps, one that, that has a zone that's created from 70 at 45 miles per hour to Thompson Road. The action will be repealing that, and the second action will be instating a new speed limit zone that will go from 70 to Vandora Springs. So if you're in agreement with that, you'll have two ordinances to approve in consent, but I just thought we'd explain those, those somewhat confusing maps to you.
35 will go from Vandora to Avery's Row.
Yes.
Yeah, both ways, or what I say, both ways, obviously, yeah. Okay, any questions for the, the manager, council members, anybody? Okay. All right, thank you so much. All right, we will go to council reports next, I believe, and I'll start with Ms. Behringer.
It's good to see those, those houses coming down next to the G-Pak on Garner Road and Avery Street. I know it's, it's a mess right now, and it's a big job, but it's good to see them coming down since they were not habitable, and pretty soon that will, that will be a, a pretty piece of property. I also attended the Showcase of Talent. I went that evening, and that's always so enjoyable to go and, and see what we have in our community and to just be able to, to sit back and relax and, and have a good time. So I'm glad they're still doing that. Mr. Mayor, we got letters at our, our places last week about the monarch butterflies. Do you have a plan for signing on to that, or is that something you're going to take care of, or do we, what do we need to do?
Well, the quick answer is yes. I'd love to see our town be one of those. I'm trying to remember if there's already, what, six or seven in Wake County, I believe. And so I, actually, I want to talk to the town manager. I believe we have, let's see, was it coming up pretty soon, our, our garden group? One of the, one of the requirements we have to meet is, is maybe having them work with us to plant some of the, I've forgotten the name of it, but it's something that attracts the monarch butterfly.
Milkweed.
Yeah, milkweed, excuse me, yeah. So I, I wanted to have an occasion to either talk with them, or I know Mr. Dellinger is, has some contact there, and see if, if that's something they could do. That will automatically give us, I think we have to have at least three of those items on there, but unless council has any concerns about that, yeah, I, I think it would be a good idea for us to be announced at a town that is interested in the monarch butterfly and protection of same, so.
It was enjoyable reading the letters the children wrote, and then the butterflies that they, the paper butterflies they put into the envelope. That was something to smile about.
Yep.
I know we have some butterfly habitat at the White Deer Park. I'm not sure what species it's meant to attract, but I know we've put in some plants especially for pollinators and butterflies.
That was another thing I wanted to check with you on, to see if we already have some things on town property.
Yeah, I can check on what the exact species is. I'm not sure it's made just for monarchs, but yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Couple more things. I had asked Mr. Hodges to get information for us last week after our retreat about the Lindtac housing in each of the different municipalities in Wake County to, just so we would have something to look at as far as what kind of percentages Wake County fosters for affordable housing in the individual towns, and it's something we can discuss some other time. But that was the email that we all got last week, and it gives us an idea of, of what Wake County is doing, and then will help us to decide what we are going to do in the future. And the last thing is, I, my husband and I went over to the farmer's market this past weekend, and we had coffee at the 321 Coffee Shop. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's a coffee shop that's operated by children with Down Syndrome, and it was a wonderful experience. They are very, very good at what they do, very helpful, and just, I would encourage anybody that has a chance to please go and visit that coffee shop.
See, did I get to you, Mr. Vance? I don't think I have, have I?
Oh, you did not.
Or Mr. Dellinger?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm going to make better notes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, just appreciation for your, your comments regarding the situation in the Ukraine. Rebecca and I went downtown this weekend on Saturday to, I wouldn't even call it a protest, it's a rally in support. There were several hundred people there. During the rally, I did speak with the organizer for the local area, and she said, oh, Garner, we have a lot of people in Garner. So I did invite her, I will reach out, they were going to DC Sunday, but I would, invited her to, I reached out to her to maybe come to council during petitions and comments at some point in the next month to give comments and make sure we show support for those folks in our community. And as Ms. Jones was giving her presentation, it, you know, we are blessed to live in a country where we protect religious freedoms, right? I mean, that's really what we sat here and did, and that's a really profound thing, so we should never take that for granted. The other item I have is, I want to thank Mr. Vance again, and Mr. Bridges, and police and fire for the presentation on the overdose information, and then the information that emerged from that around in-town suites and that situation, I think that's something that we should look at more closely and, and put some numbers on how much that costs the town. I'm also on the board, as you know, of Passage Home, and two days later, they were going through their list of projects, and one of their projects they've recently gotten involved with, I think with the city of Raleigh, is an extended stay, taking over an extended stay place and helping people in transition and stuff. So I told them I'll get more information on that, but even just given the number that Chief Poole gave us, that, you know, on average, their call is $1,000. Between them and police, they're making multiple visits, it's a lot of money that's the town is expending, wanting to help people, and then there are people who live there already who are having to deal with very stressful situations, I'm sure. So I'll be following up with Passage Home to see what they're doing in that situation, just to see what we can potentially do to make that a better situation over time. There are no quick fixes, but thank you, Mr. Vance, for initiating all of that, so.
Okay, and I'll recognize Mr. Vance at this time for any reports he has.
I'm thinking, right, it's been a long day. I'm just, it's been a long day. Go to the side of the table, I guess.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll come back to you, sir. Sure enough, I'll go to Mr. Singleton.
I'll second what Ms. Behringer said regarding the butterflies. Not only milkweed, but lantana, they love, I mean, mix them together, they love them. I mean, that's, I have, my, my wife and kids tell me, we have too many, too many lantana in our yard, but they do love them. It's beautiful to see, so, any expansion that the town can make, particularly at White Deer Park, I would certainly support. I think the project information we got tonight on LMG is wonderful, it's a good project to see. I think something we'll, will need to be prepared for is when that project is approved, moves forward the process, and when it's, if, if and when it's approved and start construction, is that we'll have people who will just go up in arms because it looks so different, because it's going to look different, and they're going to be able to say, oh, my God, I can't believe we're doing that. Well, you know, the idea is not to have just one of these down there or in Garner, is to have more like this, dense development that we have maybe some mixed use underneath it, so, I mean, that time's going to come when people raise cane about it, but it's going to be, it's, it's not.